Yeah.
It's almost time. We gotta get them chocolate bars changed. You know what? Oh, watch out. Yeah. I didn't know if.
Councilor Mark?
Hello, Ms. Square.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's meeting. This is Highland Park City Council in person and virtual regular meeting, scheduled for Monday, November sixth, twenty twenty-three at seven P. M. As far as the opening ceremonies. Ladies and gentlemen, tomorrow is Election Day in the United States of America. And I'd like to draw to your attention the unique privilege that we have to choose our leadership and the incumbent belief that we will have integrity in the election process and that the individuals who are elected to public office actually represent the views of the people. Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Councilman Ashafi.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro-Tan Robinson.
Here.
Council President Thomas.
Here. Sadly, Councilwoman Manica is ill. She won't be joining us today. She texted me. And I was supposed to let you know when I got here, but I'm letting you know now, so it should be an excuse to absence for her. So we will have the four of us conducting tonight's meeting. The first item is going to be the approval of the agenda. Council, you've had an opportunity to review your package. The chair will wait for action from council on the approval of tonight's agenda. Okay, so whoever. Caucus, please.
Yeah, okay.
May I, Council President?
Ma'am?
I said, may I? Do they have a comment?
The council would like to address members of city council, please.
Ms. Burton.
Ms. Burton. I'm sorry, I'm just being in the court.
That's okay. Good evening, council. And everyone. Under number seven, Water Department, our city administrator, Ms. Square, would like to have item number A removed at this time or continue discussions on that item.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burton, in summary, this is the request for amending the agenda, removing item A. Item seven A under the Water Department. Council, what's your pleasure on the agenda?
Council President.
Sir.
Is there a reason why Wayne Metro has been sliced in between the mayor speaking and the citizens' participation? Is there a reason for that?
This, this presentation from Wayne Metro on services provided to the city Highland Park had actually been pushed back on two different meetings. They were originally positioned in the exact same place two meetings ago, if you look at the agenda.
Okay, yeah, that's not what I asked. I asked, is there a reason why they slight in between the mayor speaking and citizen participation, or maybe I should speak a little bit louder?
Okay, so Mr. Ashafi, in plain English, this is a presentation on services being delivered to the city. On our organizational meeting, we agree that the mayor would speak, and we would allow department heads to speak or services to be presented. I don't know if you recall that. This is the standard procedure. We've had other entities placed in the exact same spot on previous meetings.
Is Wayne Metro part of our department head?
They are provided. This is about services being provided to the community.
You just said that they're allowing for department heads to speak.
And for service? Mr. Ashafi, you're splitting hairs. What is your issue with Wayne Metro?
I'm just, I'm wondering why they're in, in front of the residents instead of, instead of giving their presentation behind the rest.
So you have the ability right now to either approve the agenda or not approve it, or approve it with amendments?
Okay, I'd like to move to approve the agenda with the following amendments. I'd like for the presentation for Wayne Metro to be after citizens' participation and not before it.
Okay, do you have support?
I have support.
Okay, we have support for that. So this is the, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi to approve the agenda with the amendment. And that amendment would be to move the presentation from Wayne Metro from after the mayor and before citizens' comments to after citizens' comments. We have support from Council Pro-Town. Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Council Pro-Tan Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes. Okay, so Mr. Ashafi, you do realize, no, I'm just gonna take it as it is, because that wasn't even considered. You do realize that there was a request from the city attorney. Now, we just approved that.
I didn't know it was a request from the city attorney. That wasn't made clear to me. I asked a simple question. I got a smart response.
Okay, okay, sir. Okay, sir. Okay, we'll just pretend that it was just you and I and Ms. Burton, and no one else in the room heard that. Let's move along with the agenda if we could. Let's move along with the agenda.
No, for clarity, hold on. That was not.
You're, you're both right.
The Council President, excuse me.
Ma'am, please interject.
The item under the Water Department, the first item, I ask to be removed.
Hmm.
And so we need that removed tonight because it is not ready to be presented to council for all kinds of technical reasons. We're gonna remove that, and then we'll probably bring it back at the next council.
Okay, I did not say motion carries because I wanted to make sure I rescind my vote, change it to no. So we had a stalemate. We gonna do this over? We can.
Mr. Ashafi, you had a very good motion on the floor. It was very simple. It was very simple to move that. I was in favor of doing so. Let's do that. But let's also honor what we're being asked to do.
Agreed, agreed. I, I remake the motion to approve the agenda with the following amendments.
Go right ahead.
To move the, to move Wayne Metro presentation to after the first citizens' participation and to remove underwater on item seven, seven A, a resolution to hold a public hearing December fourth, two thousand twenty-four for the Y, Y, I'm saying FY two thousand and twenty-four Water Department budget and rates as requested by the Water Department.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi to amend the agenda. That amendment includes moving the presentation from Wayne Metro to after the mayor, to after citizens' participation. He also further amends under item seven of the Water Department that we remove item A. Do we have support?
Support.
We have support from Council Pro-Town. Madam Clerk, would you be kind enough to call to roll?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Council Pro-Tan Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes. Okay. Next item, item four, the approval of the proposed minutes. We have three sets here. We'll start with the in-person and virtual workshop meeting minutes from October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the in-person and virtual workshop meeting on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
We have a motion on the floor from Council Pro-Town for the approval of the in-person and virtual workshop meetings for October sixteenth of twenty twenty-three. Do we have support?
Support.
We have support from Councilman Ashafi. Would you please call to roll?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council Pro-Tan Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is in-person and virtual regular meeting for October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. City Council, what's your pleasure? I'm sorry. Yes, thank you very much. I'm sorry. Oh. Sure. So Lex, next, we have the in-person and virtual regular meeting for October sixteen, twenty twenty-three. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the in-person and virtual regular meetings October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
We have a motion on the floor from Council Pro-Town to approve the in-person and virtual regular meeting minutes for October sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Do we have support?
Support, what questions?
Go right ahead, Mr. Ashafi. The floor is yours.
Council President says in these meetings, it says in these minutes that you voted and you did not in that meeting.
What, what, what are you talking about? Be specific, man.
Okay, so.
It says in the minutes that I voted. Which, which section of the minutes? Go right to it, please.
Okay, so.
I need to be reminded of when I was here and didn't vote.
Okay, because when I watched the meeting, you didn't say anything.
No, 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 sir. We have a clerk right here.
No, 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 me. Just let me finish. Instead of you interrupting me, let me finish.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Let's see here. Okay. So like right here, it says a resolution to accept the indigent, indigent defense fund from the state of Michigan. It says that you voted here. I watched the meeting. You did not vote there, sir.
Um.
Yeah.
This is, so it is resolved. It says five yeas, zero nays.
I don't have a problem with the minutes. I'm just saying, it says that five yeses. It was actually four and no response from you.
Mr. Ashafi, I'm not, I'm not gonna entertain that.
Okay.
I'm not even gonna entertain that.
Okay.
I'm not even gonna entertain that you would think that I'll be sitting in this chair at a meeting.
My support.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have support for the approval of the minutes for October sixteenth?
Support.
We have support from Councilwoman Martin. Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Councilman Ashafi?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council Pro-Tan Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, in-person and virtual special meeting and closed session for October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. City Council, what's your pleasure?
We're going for the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three?
This is the October eighteenth closed session.
I want to make a motion for the, approve the in-person and virtual special meeting and closed session October eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin to approve the in-person and virtual meeting, the special meeting closed section for October eighteen, twenty twenty-three. Do we have support? Chair offers support. Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council Pro-Tan Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Okay, I'm just not, this is the special meeting where we actually got the water deal signed.
You did it again, Council President. You did not vote.
Sir.
You gotta finish the vote.
Sir, sir, sir.
You gotta finish the vote.
Sir, please, you, you make theatrical performances at the end of every vote.
While we in the middle of a vote, sir, you have to finish it.
Excuse me, sir. I can't tell you how many times you say, oh, my God, H. P., I don't know how I feel about this. I asked a question. I just want to make sure that this is a special meeting where we decided on the water issue. That's a question I ask out loud. That was, that's the meeting I'm referring to, right? Okay, thank you very much. Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. This is the portion of the program where we turn the podium over to, I'm sorry. Yes, I did. I said yes. I said yes. At motion carries. This is the portion of our city council meeting that we turn over to Mayor McDonald during our session to address the city. Mayor McDonald, if you would, please.
Everybody. Again, sack news, good evening, the night, I changed, so I'm trying to make sure that I know what time. To the council.
Hello.
Good evening. I only have a couple of things. I'm gonna be leaving. I do have my assistant on Zoom. If you have any questions for me, you can ask them. She will write them down and get with me. Just so you guys know, on Saturday, this is important, well, Wednesday, of course, we're having our coffee and conversation, but Saturday, for anyone that is visiting Highland Park, great work. Please have a come to Rex Center this Saturday, twelve noon, for our celebration of that event. There'll be a luncheon, and our, my, by the way, are going to be holding that. They're gonna be sponsoring it. They're gonna be, be in the MCs. There's gonna be some entertainment. There's games, food, fun, for the, just for our vets in Highland Park. So, come on out, twelve noon at Rex Center. It's from twelve to. Also, one note, these are moves you have. November sixteenth at six P. M. Please, no, we are having a town hall meeting. A town hall meeting. Please come on out. Six P. M. at Rex Center is in a package. If you don't have one, please pick it up up here. It will be at six P. M. We're gonna be through by seven, have a few questions, and then we'll be back. That's all I have, babe.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Okay, this is the section of the program where we turn the mic over to citizens. We have a very short agenda tonight. We only have three items. That's under the community development. This is the resolution to submit an application for Mr. Round Nine Neighborhood Enhancement Grant, Department of Public Works, the resolution to repair two heavy-duty DPW trucks, and under the Water Department, the resolution to begin the process for updates to the city of Highland Park Water, Sewer, and Drainage and Stormwater billing ordinance. This is ten forty, ten forty-two, ten forty-four, and ten forty-five. At this portion of the program, these are the only items that citizens can, can address for two minutes. And I'm gonna keep it to two minutes. At the end, we might get up to that, but I want to keep it to two because we have a very short agenda, and this may allow for more opportunities for people to speak during the end citizens' comments. I don't like having to rush you off the podium, but we do have time constraints for all the people that support us here. So if you have issues that you want to speak about for two minutes on agenda items, please make your way to the podium, and the chair will recognize you. Okay, I don't see anybody moving, and that might be a good sign, so we can move into the actual meeting. Nobody moved. Okay, so now, we are fortunate to have Wayne Metro here joining us tonight. This is a presentation on various programs offered by the agency, the representatives for Wayne Metro. If you would, please join us at the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Az Ahmad. I'm the Community Outreach Manager at Wayne Metro. I have today with me my Assistant Director, Hiba Hayduz, and Community Liaison, Jerome Dre. Thank you for having Wayne Metro here to present on our services and programs. I would like, if I'm too loud, just let me know. When, a little bit about Wayne Metro. Wayne Metro was founded in nineteen seventy-one. We serve low and moderate residents throughout Wayne County. We have over sixty-six sites. We have over one hundred programs, including educational, housing, and emergency services. Our goal is to ensure greater equity, healthier homes, and thriving communities. I would like to start how, how clients can reach Wayne Metro. Our first line of contact is the Connect Center. Client can reach out to us in several ways. They can call us. They can share us a live chat on our website at waynmetro.org, or they can send us directly an email. Also, the client can call the Connect Center, which is my favorite. Our Connect Center staff are our stars. We have bilingual staff that speak different languages, Arabic, Spanish, French, Bengali, Urdu, and other languages, and we try to help the client and service what other languages they have. The Connect Center is able to answer all the questions that the client have, such as asking questions about their, the status of their application. They are very knowledgeable about all our reps around services that the, that Wayne Metro has, so they're able to direct them to the correct department or person, also answer their questions. They're also able to complete our online application, which is live twenty-four-seven, where the client can do it at their home, or they have the opportunity to come in person and apply and bring the documents, and we can help them fill out the application by calling us also and getting an appointment or also walk-ins. We have several appointments that they can take throughout the day. We are open five days a week, Monday through Friday, from eight till six o'clock, and Saturdays from eight thirty to twelve. Our documents are the basic documents, our IDs, and any eighteen-year-old in the household or older, current income for the past thirty, for the current thirty days, a utility bill, and if they're applying for MEET, we will need an approved SER.
Could you help them? I know what SER is, because you give them the acronym.
Yes, I, this is my next point. SER is the State Emergency Relief Program, which is the client has to apply to receive the MEET funding, which is basically what they do is they're gonna go to the DHS office, or they're gonna apply online and request an SER. They're gonna complete the application upon approval. They will come back to us and apply for MEET. The good part is MEET just started in October, the new fiscal year, and there is an increase in the assistant amount from twenty-five hundred last year to two thirty-five hundred this year, and up to seventeen hundred from the DHS office, which is MDHS Office, which is the Michigan Department of Health and Services. So basically, what it is, they will help a client to get in a plan on a monthly basis, where they're gonna have a set amount of payment on a monthly basis until they exit out of the program, and usually it ranges between ninety to one thirty. It depends upon their income. So basically, MEET is a preventative program designed to provide energy assistance to low households so they can reach energy, energy self-efficacy. So also on the flyer, I'm gonna be sharing all the programs I'm gonna mention. I'm gonna share the flyers. The flyer itself will have a QR code, a barcode that the client can just scan it and direct, write directly to the application so they can fill it out. And also, the flyer will include the call center phone number, the webpage, and a direct, and all the benefits, the questions that they're gonna be asking. They're gonna find all the answers on it. So it's really very simple, very direct. They can directly scan it. They're, they're gonna get into the application. My other program I want to talk about is weatherization program, which is this program permanently reduce energy costs for low-income households by increasing the energy efficiency of their homes while ensuring residents are safe and healthy. Basically, this program was for a long time on a waitlist, or interest form, I'm gonna call it. Right now, it's open for residents, and that online application that I mentioned early that I forget to mention is the online application has all of our services listed at one stop shop that the client can fill out the application and select all the services that we, that Wayne Metro does offer. So weatherization is one of those services the client can pull up. When the client selects weatherization, what happens is an assessor auditor will go out to the house. They will assess the house and see if the house is able to be health and fixed. Basically, it's a minor home repair program, nothing major, so they can help with wall insulation, attic insulation, and ventilation, foundation insulation. Sometimes they are able to do appliance reviews. So each house will have their own tailored program, so when the auditor or assessor goes out. So when the auditor or assessor goes out, they will check the house, and they will do whatever needs to be done as long as they're eligible for the weatherization program. And every house is different. As of now, there is no waitlist for this program, too. My next program that we have is MYHAP, which is Michigan Homeowner Assistant Fund. Uh, MYHAP is established under the American Rescue Plan and is designed to provide assistance with delinquent housing expenses to reduce the foreclosure, loss of utilities, displacement of homeowners who experienced COVID-related issues. So it does also help with clients who have, uh, mortgage, uh, land contract, um, uh, property tax. If they have any areas or back they have weak, or they are able to help them with it. And they have, they require their regular, um, qualifications such as an ID. But this program will request social security as a plus. So they will ask for income. They will ask for I D. They will ask for, um, the deed if they're doing for, uh, the mortgage. And they will ask for the social security for every single person. Also, this flyer will include all the benefits and all the requirements needed. And also a Q R code that they can scan it, and they can direct them directly to the application to complete it. And this program specifically is open to everyone in Michigan. It's not specific city, so it's open to everyone. And I just want to add to this program that we are winding down at this program, so at the end of the grant, but as of this minute, we still have openings, and they're still taking in applications for it. My next pro, uh, program is tax preparation program, which is, um, a free year-round preparation service from Wayne Metro to the clients. And this is certified, this, the preparers are certified through the I R S. And they can fill up to five, I'm, uh, sorry, up to three years in back taxes. It's offered all year round. We have the option of in-person and virtual option. They're eligible for it, the household income up to sixty thousand. But for the clients who are doing it online, there is no limit for income, and they can serve any resident in Michigan. And now I'm gonna hand it off for our, uh, for Jerome Dre, our Community Liaison.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thanks. Thank you to this honorable body for having us this evening, um, as, as the, uh, our, our esteemed, uh, Council President indicated, we, we are gonna continue to try, and we were finally able to come back to you to provide this, give you an overview of the services that we have to offer. Uh, there's just one additional, um, area that I wanted to touch on. At Wayne Metro, we have what we call our Regional Advisory Councils. So we have six regional advisory councils, and these councils are made up of our customers that are in the, in the regional advisory areas and, uh, organizations, businesses, faith-based organizations. They come together and they provide direction to Wayne Metro on where the services should be in the regional advisory councils, um, area. And also, they are, uh, they, uh, appoint, or correction, they vote for one representative to, uh, speak on their behalf, and they become a member of the Wayne Metro Board of Directors. And so they have direct access. They're at the table, um, making decisions on where funds are gonna go as relates to Wayne Metro and what types of services are needed in the various areas. Uh, so Highland Park is in Region One. And in, and in Region One, there are eight communities, Hamtramck. Um, we also have, we also have Harper Woods, Gross Point, Gross Point Park, Gross Point Farms, Gross Point Woods, Gross Point Shores. And so that is Region One. And, uh, I'm here today to, um, make a, 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 uh, announcement and a recommendation for individuals that live in Highland Park, businesses, or community members, and/or faith-based organizations to, um, look at having someone to become a member of Region One for, uh, our regional advisory councils. Um, currently, we have approximately, uh, ten organizations from Highland Park that are on the regional advisory council, and some of them, of course, are familiar to you. For instance, the Reggie McKenzie Foundation, or BASS, which is the, uh, organization with, uh, um, uh, Ms. Johnson, her organization. Um, we also have, um, Avalon Village is one of the organizations that are right now currently active, um, with the Region One. And so we're looking to have more organizations, more community members to become active on the regional advisory council. Because again, they give us recommendations on where funds should go in the community. And they also have a stake in that they are vested on our Board of Directors, um, at Wayne Metro. Uh, so I just wanted to bring that to the attention of our community, as well as to the selected body. Uh, because we are continuing to recruit to bring on additional individuals in organizations, so they can make a direct difference in where the funds go as relates to Wayne Metro. And so with that being said, I thank you for allowing Wayne Metro to present.
Is there an application process, or how was?
Yes, there is, there is an application process, and do you, you have some of the flyer? Um, Asa has some of the flyers. Um, you can reach out to our, our website, and you can apply right on, on the website.
Is this a general application? Is it specifically for council members or for community? Who are the applicants?
The, the applicants are individuals that are housed in Highland Park. It could be council. It could be community members. It can be faith-based organizations that are in Highland Park. And they make up, uh, Region One of the other communities that I mentioned. And so we have six regional advisory councils throughout Wayne County. And then we have a head start representative that makes up a third of the board for Wayne Metro. And so again, thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. And if you know of any organizations or individuals that are interested in becoming members of Region One, uh, please reach out. Again, Asa has some flyers, and they can go online and just, uh, to our website and just fill out a, a simple application. I don't even think it's two pages. Um, and we'll, we'll invite them to the next, um, regional council meeting, and they will become active and become part of Region One.
Okay, thank you. Would you have about, can you give five minutes, council? Do you have any questions you want to just get addressed? Anything? Anything?
No.
I hear silence. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did you say businesses as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for your time. That's great. Thank you very much. So, council, moving on to item five, under community development. We have the first item is a resolution to submit an application for Mr. Round Nine Neighborhood Enhancement Grant. We've all had an opportunity to take a look at this in our packet. Chair, entertain the motion. Floor is open for council to do it with their pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to submit application for Mr. Round Nine Neighborhood Enhancement Grant.
We have a motion on the floor from Council Pro Tem Robinson, with support from Councilwoman Ashafi. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on item five?
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, item six, under Department of Public Works, is the resolution to repair two heavy-duty D P W trucks. City Council, what's your pleasure?
Council President Thomas?
Yeah.
Um, I, I thought there was going to be, uh, public speaking, um, before the agenda. Um, and I have something to say about, about that issue.
So we called, um, we called for public comment. I left the floor open, and I said, if you had anything before that, if you wanted to come to the podium.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
Hi. Did you hear that in the back, Ms. Ford? Okay, so yeah, we moved, we moved it around. So Wayne Metro came after when public comment was. There'll be a section at the end, though, and I'll give you as much time as you need.
Uh, I, well, I would like.
Ms. Ms. Sikorsky, this is, this is out of order for you to stand up in the back and talk like that. It would never work in Detroit, or Harper Woods, or Farmington Hills, or any other community like that, out, outside of the time to talk based on the agenda items. No, ma'am.
Your estimates?
Ma'am. Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. At the end of it, I will give you five minutes if you want it, but that's not how you do it. Ma'am. Please. Please. City Council, we were on item six, Department of Public Works Resolution to Repair Two Heavy Duty D P W Trucks.
Is Mr. Reese here to give us some insight?
Ms. Ashafi, I'm waiting on somebody to take action on item six, Department of Public Works Resolution to Repair Two Heavy Duty Trucks. That's Mr. Reese standing at the podium.
Oh.
So can we get some, can we get some action on item?
I need some pick of glasses. I definitely didn't see him. Okay. Okay, uh, motion to approve with questions.
We have a motion to approve, this is, uh, item six, Department of Public Works Resolution to Repair Two Heavy Duty D P W Trucks. Mr. Ashafi has made his motion. Do we have support? The chair offers support. Madam Clerk? Just a second. Mr. Ashafi, you have the floor, sir. You made a resolution. You, you made a motion for this resolution. The floor is yours, please.
Um, Mr. Reese, if you can give me a little bit more insight. I'm looking at these numbers. I got one, two.
Should be three.
Okay, I got one, two, three. Four, five, six different invoices here. With different numbers. Give me a, give me a, give me a little bit of explanation. If you'd like to take a look. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's all right. Okay. Are they like, are they like estimates for each one of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
The problem is both, uh, both of these trucks had never had major.
Yeah, please, you get the microphone.
Yeah, uh, please go right in, Mr. Reese.
These trucks have never had major, uh, work done to them.
Okay.
And they need to be brought up to actual, um, what's that, D O T specs.
Okay.
And those trucks pay, uh, they play a major part in, you know, what we do as far as dumping, uh, pushing snow. And so right, right now, I'm actually tearing up trailers, trying to, uh, you know, go pick up dumping, because Highland Park is a big dump area. So these trucks need major work, and they've been sitting a couple of months.
Oh, which one of those estimates are we going with?
Uh, I would like to go with J and J, if, if possible.
Can I see J and J?
J and J is, is also done work for us in the past.
Okay.
Yes. As, hopefully, I can get them ready for the snow season.
Easy, Tony. Okay, here we go. J and J. So J and J, uh, so J and J has quoted us at nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Is that correct?
For one truck, yes.
Okay.
And the other truck, I believe, is.
The second truck is sixteen thousand, six hundred, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-three cents.
Correct.
Okay.
These are, these are heavy-duty trucks. They have to be brought at actual D O T specs. Uh, no major work has ever been done on these trucks. The trucks run to ninety, so they, they don't take def, so they're worth fixing, because they, um, they're, they're certain cat engines.
Okay.
They're really good trucks. We just need to bring them up to, to specs.
Okay, is, uh, is a hundred and eighty-nine dollars, uh, per hour, is that standard for those type of equipments? Understanding heavy-duty equipments, that a standard rate that they give?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So that is a standard rate?
Yes, well, you know, your, your average car rate, now even, you know, for dealership is like one twenty-five.
Okay.
So yeah, these are, these are, you know, heavy-duty dump trucks.
Okay.
They need turbos. They have, um, back drums that, uh, you know, brakes don't work. So I can't even put them on the road.
Ms. Ford, do we have the money to cover this?
Yes, we, the money is in the budget of, of nine, maybe nine.
Okay. Okay, is that including the seventy-five thousand we gave them on top of that?
It's in the budget.
Okay, okay. All right. Any more questions, Council President?
All right, do we have any other questions from members of council? Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll on item six, for Department of Public Works Resolution to Repair Two Heavy Duty D P W Trucks?
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes. So that motion didn't carry. So just like cutting grass, we're not pushing snow. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right, next item is un, under, uh, item seven, the Water Department. This is there now a resolution to begin the process for updates to the City of Highland Park Water Sewer and Drainage and Stormwater Billing Ordinance. It's ten forty, ten forty-two, ten forty-four, and ten forty-five. City Council, what's your pledge?
I make a motion to pass the resolution to begin the process for updates to the City of Highland Park Water Sewer Drainage and Stormwater Billing Ordinance. It's ten forty, ten forty-two, ten forty-four, and ten forty-five.
We have a motion on the floor from Council Pro Tem for, under the Water Department, for seven A. Um, she made a resolution to support.
Seven B.
Seven B, it's, but seven A is gone, seven A is gone, so it's seven A. It's seven A. It's seven A. We have a motion on the floor from Council Pro Tem to approve the resolution to begin the process for the updates to the City of Highland Park Water Sewer and Drainage and Stormwater Billing Ordinance. Do we have support?
Support with questions?
Mr. Ashafi, you have the floor.
Okay, so, uh, is this going to include some workshops?
It will have to include workshops on Mondays.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm good.
Okay, would you, uh, Madam Clerk, do we have additional questions?
Permission to be heard?
Just, let me breathe. This man.
You know who I am. You can see me, right?
Go right ahead.
I'm all right.
Hold on, Mr. Attorney Burton asked to be heard.
Oh, yes, please.
Just also, I, I think the, uh, ordinances should be referred to the legal department, and then we can have, uh, a review and have a workshop after that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so right now, we can, Mr. Garrett, if you don't mind, we'll take the vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Madam Clerk, if you would please call for the roll on item seven?
Is, is this with the referring to legal or their input?
Yes.
Yes. So, so we have motion on the floor from Council Pro Tem Robinson, supported by Mr. Ashafi, if you would call the roll.
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, um, this is the section of the program where we have citizen participation, where citizens can speak for no more than two minutes. I set this clock for two minutes. It always runs to three. So today I have it set for three minutes. Uh, if you would like to be heard, please queue up at the mic. I'm gonna be a stickler with my time in some instances. Except when you stare at me like Ms. Ford is doing right now. So this is an advisor, this is an advisor, this time thing. We, we finished early tonight. So I think that we should, we should get it done. So if you don't mind going ahead, ma'am, thank you so much. You can introduce yourself to us.
Uh, my name is Renee Ford. I live on, uh, Buena Vista. Good, uh, evening, council, citizen. I have a question to the two councilperson that voted no on getting these, uh, two heavy-duty D P W trucks done. One, from what I understand, has something to do with cleaning the streets or the salt or picking up garbage or whatever. I want to know why they voted no, because if they were used to get salt on major streets or whatever, we won't have these trucks out here. So my question is, why did you guys, you young ladies, vote no? And we have the money, from what I heard, to get them repaired, so why was there no vote?
You can look at the estimates.
You can look at the estimates and you can call around and make some. I voted no.
Okay, so do you believe that he could have got lower estimates? Cause from what Mr. Alshafi stated, he saw three or four of them. And I thought when you do those, you have to have at least three and go with the lowest one, if I'm not mistaken. So I heard from Pro Tim. Ms. Martin, what was your reasoning?
The budget. Is it in the budget?
She, I heard you say twice, we had the money for it, didn't we? Oh, okay, I'm, I'm confused. I understand what Ms. Robinson was stating that, but I think we went with the lowest budget. And Ms. Martin said we don't have the money, so did you not hear her say we had the money? Oh, I'm confused. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, council.
How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
Um, we are here today because we're with Micro Auto Paint, Micro Auto Group, and Tyrone Hinton and Kalinda Watkins and Frank Haywood told us that we would be on the agenda today to vote, and we were on the, um, CBA meeting last month where we had a recommendation.
You mean Planning Commission?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the Planning Commission, yeah. And, um, we were recommended for approval, but we were told we were gonna be on this agenda today, like I said, from Tyrone, Kalinda, and Frank, and we were not on the agenda today, so we're just wondering what's going on.
So.
Apparently it didn't make the cutoff for the agenda.
I was told.
Hold on a second.
Excuse me, Mr. Hinton, I think it's sick.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't make the cutoff, it's probably on the next meeting of, of, you know, every tour.
Yeah, I spoke to him because he wasn't at the Planning Commission meeting because he was sick, and he told me, he personally said, you will for sure be on this meeting because we're trying to build a building, and we've been, um, it's a company, we've been part of the city for seventy-five years. We've been open for seventy-five years. We've been here since nineteen fifty-eight, right off of Victor and Manchester. We own part of the block, and we're trying to build a building, and we have been for six months now, and I've been working with the city, and we've just get, been getting pushed back and pushed back, and now we're about to hit winter, and we won't be able to get our building up if we hit winter, you know, without approval, and it's affecting our business at this point.
What's your name?
Megan Hicks.
Megan, I, the only thing I can say is I don't know what happened about that. It hasn't come across my mailbox, but I can only say you're not the first.
Yeah. Okay.
That's the only thing I can tell you. Unfortunately, I'm sorry, there should be a system in place.
Yeah, the unorganization with this process.
Hold on a second, Ms. Hicks, let me, let me, let me interject you like, like Councilwoman Martin was saying. So you guys have been here for seventy-five years?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so this is probably not your first rodeo in the City of Highland Park. Now, hold on a second, I, I wish that you were on the agenda. And I know what it's like to have a project trying to start because concrete doesn't cure in the winter. So I get it. I get it as a developer. So what I'm, what I think the best thing for you to do is be patient. Just be patient with this, with our city. As you, you, this is your first city council meeting, you can see that, you know, some parts of the machine are sticking. So if you be patient, um, you can be on the next agenda. Like, uh, like Councilwoman Martin said, that you, you're not the, it's not the first time that it's happened, and that there's been a lot of issues in CED. None of that falls on you as an applicant, so if you could just be patient with us and maintain the goodwill that we still have, then we'll do great. So hopefully we'll see you on that next meeting.
When is the next meeting?
Council President.
Yes, ma'am.
Council President, may, may I address, please?
Yes, the mayor would like to address us, if you would, please.
Uh.
Madam Mayor?
I, I'm here. I'm trying to find, what is her name?
Megan Hicks.
Megan Hicks, and you are with which company?
Micro Auto Group.
The Micro Auto Group on Victor.
I, yeah, I know the company. Ms. Hicks?
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton and his assistant both have been out. His assistant broke her leg, and Mr. Hinton has, Ms. H, her, his, Mr. Hinton has been ill. So like our, uh, uh, Ms. Ms. Square said, if it doesn't make the cutoff, it doesn't make the agenda. No one has been able to get that done because we are short-staffed. You will be contacted. I don't, he might have told you that it was, might be on the agenda, or it was going to move forward, but at the time, that was before he became ill. He was already sick, and he's, he has had a couple of incidents, so he has not been available. And of course, Ms. Ms., um, Kalinda broke her leg, and so she's not been there either. So we are pushing, we're pushing to get these things on the agenda. Also, let me say this. We have had obstacles in our way of getting these things approved at the city council meeting. So when city council members say that, uh, we don't have a process, we have a process. There is a process. And we brought people before them. So now we're revamping the process so that it can go forward. We don't want to bring anybody before the council and it get voted down like it's been doing. So we're, as soon as Mr. Hinton returns, and he will be in tomorrow if he said he wasn't feeling good today. So hopefully he'll feel better and he'll be in tomorrow, and we'll be working on that process of getting those things done. Also, we have documents coming in from the lawyers. There's documents that has to be produced before you can purchase anything or move forward with your plans. And so those documents have come in, some of them, and some have not. So we're waiting on the lawyers to produce those, finish producing the documents that are returning. So if you could please be patient, because we do have people ill.
Way over your two minutes. I just want you to know, we're being, we giving you grace.
I understand. I completely understand everything you guys are saying. I'm just saying I talked to Tyrone and he confirmed that I would be on this agenda.
So you, I want you to maintain the goodwill that you have.
Did you talk to him today?
Today we have a short agenda, and normally you get two minutes. Citizens who live here, who pay taxes, and we have a business here, but we make the citizens, everybody from grandmas on up, two minutes. So I thank you so much for your time, and I'm gonna ask you to yield it back, and we'll see you at the next meeting, okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, can I ask one question? I know we're over our time.
I mean, if you're gonna, you, you another person. Yeah, are you another person, so you want your two minutes or?
I, I just wanted to ask, you said we'd be on the next agenda?
No, I said we have a meeting on the twentieth. We're gonna try to get you on that meeting.
Thank you.
Yep, do me a favor and stay to the end.
Hi, council. I'm Lisa Stilarsky. I live on Moss Street. Yeah?
I just wanted you to see me take my watch and sit it over here. Okay, physically.
Okay, so, um, you know, this afternoon, um, I want a completely different topic was hanging out with Councilwoman Robert Robinson, and since, um, I have a fleet, you know, of my own, I take care of a fleet of cars of my own. Um, she just had to be this thing, so what do you think about this? And I, I took a look at the, um, uh, the estimates for the truck, and, and I thought that they were kinda high. So, um, in my former career, I, I did, um, uh, community economic development, um, types of things, and feasibility studies in particular, and, and I'm pretty good at pricing things out. Uh, so I priced out each of the parts that were called for, um, uh, for, um, for, uh, each of the trucks. I made sure that I was looking for parts for a two thousand eight Sterling truck. Um, in some cases, you can only get them used because Sterling trucks, they stopped making them in two thousand nine. Uh, but what I found was that, uh, especially, I mean, I'm not sure about the labor, but with the, the parts, um, in particular, uh, all three of these estimates are inflating the cost of the parts ridiculously so, two, three, even five times as much as the parts should cost. Um, and, and so, um, where, and, and when I was pricing these parts, I made sure to look for the most expensive one. Like, I, I wanted to be sure that I wasn't, you know, do, trying to do anything on the cheap. I was looking for the most expensive parts, and uh, just to give you an example, um, uh, where's a tie rod? The tie rods for one of the trucks replace two tie rod ends. Well, a Sterling truck tie rod end runs seventy-one dollars and ninety-nine cents a piece, so a hundred and forty-three ninety-eight for two tie rod ends. And they wanna charge you guys six hundred and fifty dollars minimum for those parts. Uh, um, so, and, and there's a, it, it's not like the labor is included there because they have a separate line item for labor. And the line items are for a lot of labor. Um, the, the least amount of labor for the first truck is twenty-six point five hours. You know, and they're doing, and, and they're charging, you know, that's the one with a hundred and eighty-nine dollars per hour. So I know that they're getting paid for the labor separately, you know, so I'm like, why is, is the part five times the amount? Um, if the labor is also so expensive? So I think that you have three people who were giving estimates in bad faith. Um, uh, and I, I would just urge, um, the DPW department to take a look, you know, at the cost of these parts, and talk to the Bureau of Labor Management about, you know, what labor should be for, um, uh, servicing diesel trucks. Um, and, and then, you know, I mean, I couldn't even help with that, and be back here in two weeks and start getting those trucks on the road.
Thank, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How are you, sir?
Hey, pretty good.
I'm bringing my watch back. This is my first time seeing you. Go right ahead.
No, I'm not gonna go take more than two minutes.
Sure.
I don't know, is the mayor still tuned in?
Madam Mayor?
I'm here.
Okay, great. Um, what I came to ask about was, um, I know that the governor supposedly paid the water bill.
That's not what happened.
It's not what happened. Okay, so I was just here to get questions on what actually did happen.
That's the expert sitting right there. You feel like answering?
I'll do that, but let's ask the participation and then I'll.
Yeah, okay, is that only your, your only question?
Yeah, that was my only question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Two minutes, Mr. Lamir.
I know the deal. Good evening, council. Good evening, uh, City of Highland Park, uh, the world. I hope someday that this place is two point nine eight square miles. I hope someday we'll all be able to hang out in here together. I don't have COVID. Kreshid, do you have COVID? My baby. Um, so I have some excellent news, and, uh, I'll address you, sir. Uh, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, uh, for pointing me in the right direction with the, uh, how you say, uh, Black Women Small Business Incubator, uh, due to the, uh, how you say, uh, squeaky wheel here in Highland Park. I took the idea to the north end, and we got a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the feds. Uh, so we're gonna parlay that into some more cabbage, and there's fifty-five unused classrooms on the backside of eighty-eight oh one Woodward, so, uh, I'd love for you to come down and break some bricks sometime. Uh, we'll probably get the full amount of due, uh, in the next six months here, so we'll connect and, and, and thank you for thinking about me, uh, with that spot right off the lodge in Glendale, but, uh, you know, uh, oh, and just a quick historical note, uh, the, 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 uh, how you say, uh, 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 mass production was invented in this town. Uh, so maybe, uh, we can get Billy Ford on the horn to give us some pointers on how to keep things moving, uh, because this is the greatest city in America, and I ain't going nowhere, baby. Thank you.
How are you, sir?
Hi, I'm doing well. Uh, my name is Brian Donovan, and, uh, I would like to thank you all for the work that you have done and are doing. Um, I, uh, I, I'm now have a board I report to that meets on Monday night, so I'm not very often able to attend the meetings. Um, so I, I wanted to especially thank the people who negotiated the settlement agreement, um, and, uh, worked with the governor in Gleeber to come up with, uh, what's happening. And, uh, I also, uh, was interested in finding out how that's coming together, whether the approvals that are necessary to happen have happened, and I did see that thirty million was appropriated, uh, uh, at the end of last week. Um, so I know there's still a lot of moving parts and things happening, and I, I really appreciate your willingness to give an update of kind of where we are. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, I see an empty podium, Ms. Square, if you would like to.
Good evening, everybody. Do I need to stand at podium or can I just? Yeah, it was a long nine years. Uh, I came January twenty fifteen. Uh, the city had lost the case, and, uh, we spent nine years trying to reverse it. Uh, it's a long story, starting back in nineteen forty-nine with this water plant in Detroit, an unmetored sewer, and now unmetored emergency water. But at the end of the day, we decided to come together and settle the lawsuit. So we settled the lawsuit. So then, you know, paying the bill, the so-called bill, it was settling the lawsuits, and the next settlement has resulted in that bill vanishing in a sense, that back bill. But trust and believe, we got a long haul ahead. Tonight, an item was pulled from the agenda determining the proposing a new budget, water department budget, and water rates uh, that came out of the mediation. Uh, and we still have some work to do on those rates so that they aren't so astronomical that we can't pour a tank. Because know this, you don't get a bailout and have to have to skin the gang. We never listened, we were gonna, we never thought that we were gonna name a state and not have to pay anything, and not have to have rate increases and all that. Highland Park's major concern was to stay in their homes because this levy was on everybody's house. And so I, I kind of picture it like the Grinch to spell Christmas, you know, and remember all the people, who bill came out after the Grinch brought Christmas back. But we still have now to work through the transactions. So I probably need to be here one more year because in the next year, we gotta get the water metered. Because we have unmetored water and unmetored sewer. And as long as it's unmetored, there's an opportunity for fraud. There's an opportunity for our bill to be whatever they say our bill is. And that was part of the term, to meter, let me finish, to meter. And so that meter, um, will have to go on, and, uh, there's gonna be some infrastructure improvements. So what the legislature did was appropriate infrastructure improvements, which are wonderful for the city. This is a great opportunity for the council and the mayor and the city and development, because now these infra, these infrastructure funds will make it more affordable for developers to come. So if say they wanna build a street, or they wanna build some condos or whatever, well, anywhere you stick something like that, you're gonna back up on some old water sewer that need to be replaced. It's a hundred-year-old plus town, and basically, everything needs to be replaced. Now, we have replaced about twenty-five percent of it. You go through town now, and you see work being done all over the place, but you're gonna see more work being done, which is wonderful. It's a wonderful opportunity. This is a great opportunity for the city going forward. So, uh, we start all over. Now, once we get this temporary budget approved, uh, and get the meter in, our rates should go down because then we'll be based on meter, a meter service. And so that's what we're striving for over the next year, getting that in, getting these improvements in. There's, uh, there was money appropriated, uh, for that. Now, what Gleeber got as a, you know, they had, they agreed to settle, and this was a great opportunity, so big thank you to everybody here, everybody here rated huge part because the citizens of Highland Park, the electric officials in Highland Park, their voices were heard. So, you know, my voice, I'm, I'm, I'm on my rest leg now. And I'm gonna try to survive the next year, but I am really wounded after that mediation. It was rough. It was, uh, it was knock down, drag out, because I fought like a dog for the city, because I'm only at the city because the city went out looking for like a gunman nine years ago. They basically said, they're trying to do us in, we need somebody there. That's what I came in for. I didn't come in to manage people, to manage personalities, no. I came in for almost a specific reason, and I'm glad that I was successful. I'm basically known for my work. Anywhere I've been in Michigan, they know, they don't know me because I'm fun. They know me for my work. So I'm proud that it's been done. But know this, there's work ahead. There's rate increases that are coming because we weren't exactly paying for water because we were overpaying for sewer. That's been settled now. So now we have to pay for both commodities. And there will be an attempt to meter the sewer as well. The problem with sewer is, it's a loop. You know those turnaround loops on like 15-mile road, 14-mile road, where they took out the traffic and now you have to go in like a Billy circus man? That's what our water system is like. So it's very, that's why it's never been metered because it's flowing in from Detroit and it's flowing back out. You know, even some of the emergency lines are flowing back into the Detroit water lines. And so we're gonna be doing a lot of engineering to try to get the system functioning as a metered system. That's gonna take work. So everybody needs to stay involved, get involved with going to the Gleewa meetings. There's gonna be a lot of assistance available because the governor has recognized that there are a lot of folks in the town that may not be able to deal with some of these rate increases. And so we will now be eligible for the Gleewa Assistance Program. Remember, you call down there, they'd be like, you're not a member of GLM, they'd hang up the phone. And and now Metro and SAW, and I think there's a couple foundations that the state's been working with so that we can get through this time period while we're waiting to get that meter in before the rates are really what they're supposed to be. And then tonight, the council sent the ordinance to legal so that we can look at those ordinances to make sure that the methodology for rate setting and service providing meets with the law, the standards, the regulations so that everything kind of works together. So this is really a rebuild. And so, and then there are the transactions that still have to be executed. There is the, the 20, we're gonna have a 20-year contract for water and sewer with GLM. That was part of the settlement. We're going to need a trust agreement because right now, the money that come, you know, people in the community, you've seen them when county courts come and say, they say, well, we've paid our water bill, but the city didn't send it out. That's not true. What has hap- what happens, happened here since 1996. When Chrysler left, Chrysler cut a deal. You had a fixed rate. Chrysler cut the deal and the deal provided that 65 cents of every dollar be put in an escrow and sent to Detroit. That has always happened. There has never been an instance where money that was paid from your bill didn't go down there. The problem is that the rates started being raised by emergency managers and they didn't honor that agreement. And the next thing you know, that, you know, the rates were raised. And once I got here and said, hey, wait a minute, they had a fixed rate. They're like, no, you didn't. We've been raising them all along, so you suck at that. And that's why we fought. And that's why we fought. And that's why we appealed and fought and appealed and appealed to get to this point where we got to settle because you had a fixed rate. It just got off track. So this is why it's so important to stay focused, to pay attention and to stay involved with everything that's going on. And, and so I believe that the city is going to thrive because I didn't come here to work five years for a fact. So that's what happened and thank God the governor stepped in. Because what happened here was what should have happened in Flint before they come plug the water, but they didn't have it. So instead of us having an economic tsunami, because remember, I marched in here and marked and may as well say bankruptcy. And so that was important because that got everybody's attention because we were going bankrupt. They were gonna take everybody's houses. Then we were gonna be bankrupt by the fall, whether we agreed to or not, it was gonna be by the fall. But that didn't happen. So what you basically did, you all need to give yourselves round of applause. You saved yourself, right? And that's what happened. So we've got the, the, we've got a final settlement agreement has to get approved. We've got the trust agreement because the money's gonna still go onto an escrow. We've got the, the, oh, this was the, this was the thing that saved you. But remember the Hound Fire a few years ago, it burned up and you see it all the way to space? And we got, we had a lead emergency and everybody had to put filters on their sinks. Well, this DQ at the time stepped in and said, that's it, Highland Park. You're gonna sign this forward order and you're gonna fix all this stuff. You're gonna do it. You're gonna, you got Metro now and they're gonna do this, that, and this, and that. You better do it like this. That's the document we use to settle. So the money now, and then basically that was an unfunded mandate. But now with the money from the legislature, it basically funds that ACO, which had already established a timeline for repairing the system. And up to this point, you've seen the water department march in here and get work forms and stuff. We've got about 25% of it done. So now you've got the money to fund the rest of it. So that, listen, that's a huge, a huge accomplishment. That would not have happened if the voices in this town hadn't been heard. So I just wanna, you know, I was just the vehicle, the vessel. You all saved yourselves and, and, and once we get these other transactions completed, settlement agreement, the ACO amended, we already have the ACO that brought this forward. That amended with the money attached, the trust agreement, the rate increase, rates got fixed tonight because we got about $2 million problem that we need some funding to support so that we aren't just, you know, rates up so high that we're out of, out of our, you know, can't pay them. We're still working on that. We've got some ideas on how to bring them down so it isn't such an enormous increase. But the fact is, we had to save everybody's house because they were gonna take them. Listen, you were gonna have the, I know and you can, you can...
Don't, sir, do me this one thing. Yeah, that's, we're not gonna have it. Okay, thank you.
But Flint happened and Ben Harbor happened and all these other places. And you can wish and pray that it wasn't, but you gotta do the diligence to make sure that it doesn't. And that's what Highland Park did. And it was this council, the council forum and the council for that, all the way back to the past 10 years. So this has really been, this is the city saving itself. You know, I, like I said, I was just hired to come in and get this done. But, so know that, know that, you know, it's easy to Monday morning quarterback now. It's easy to Monday morning, this one will happen, that one will happen. But let me tell you something, it, Highland Park made sure it didn't happen. And so that's where we are. It's a good thing. It's, it's a good reason to celebrate. I'm gonna try to stay healthy, keep my strength up. Councilman Ashapi said he haven't laid a glove on. You get back in there. But the fact is that we've got this next stress, stretch over the rest of the year. And then we've got some January, you know, end of the year, January 1st deadline, January, December, December 31st, January 15th, February 15th. And we're gonna get it done. And, and like I said, the city's gonna thrive. You're gonna, you're gonna rebuild the city. You've got now the infrastructure money for the developers. See, developers aren't coming in here because they know that they got another couple million dollars to add to their development. Because they gotta put in the water and sewer lines and the current government, that city's got the money now. So now, now you, you know, you look a lot more attractive. So it's just a great opportunity and, and I can see it. You know, I'm gonna move on, you know, once I wrap up all these things and look back and smile and see you all successful and the city growing. So that's the good thing that happened and it happened. And we're gonna move forward and, and that's basically how we got here tonight.
All right. Thank you very much, ma'am. I really appreciate it. No, okay, so listen, we're gonna do some housekeeping, all right? We'll do some housekeeping because we're about to go into council affairs. Not a single person in this room could go down in Detroit City Council and do what you've done here tonight. You couldn't walk past that line. You couldn't talk when the council people were talking. I'm gonna ask you guys to please, please, I don't know why people think it's okay to disrespect Highland Park. You couldn't go to West Bloomfield or Pontiac or Rollo and do that. They would say, ma'am, sir, please follow our rules. I've watched and I've attended many city council meetings in southeastern Michigan. And they say to you, ma'am, sir, when you reach your two minutes, they'll send two nice police officers over to have a conversation with you about following the rules. And tonight, have you noticed there are no police officers here? Except the one? Just the one? Yeah, yeah. Now, now, now his job is to make sure he comes up here during this time because this is when people typically show their disrespect for our small city. They don't have to respect Highland Park. Y'all talk when the council people are talking. You come past the podium. So what I'm gonna ask you before my colleagues speak is, when it's council affairs, the members of council have an opportunity to speak uninterrupted. Don't, this is not the Colosseum. Don't interject. Show us enough respect that you don't scream from the bleachers because if you did it in Detroit, they would drag you out of there. If you did it in Huntington Woods, they would drag you out of there. I don't know why everybody is so comfortable disrespecting the public officials of Highland Park that you would just interject and scream from the stands. The next time you go to a Detroit City Council meeting, sneeze loudly and see what happens. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to my colleagues so that they can speak unimpeded. Mr. Ashapi from District 3, the floor is yours.
Good evening, HP. How y'all doing this evening? So, so first of all, I have a question for legal. I'm, I'm looking at an entire stack of directives here, entire stack of directives. I wanna know exactly which one of these directives have been rescinded, which ones are still in effect. They have no dates as to when they end. They all got a date as to when they started, but no dates as to when they end. And a lot of these directives contradict a lot of things which we're doing around here that if these directives are still active, we shouldn't be doing. So I need to know what directives are active and which directives are not active. If legal would be so kind as to get back to me in a timely manner on that.
Well, it may take some time since you have a stack.
I, I told them, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, and, and I'm pretty sure that it's more than this, but this is what Mrs. Brown found for me. Yeah, yeah, it's quite a bit. I'm pretty sure it's quite a bit. So, yeah.
Excuse me, Ms. Brown in Pontiacville's Clerk Green did.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Green. Okay, this is it for the staff.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Okay, then. Thank you, Ms. Green. I appreciate that.
And Councilman Ashapi, I'll work for you on that too because I know a couple of major ones that have been rescinded. One was the Building Department.
Okay.
Because the Building Department was previously run by Laura.
Mm-hmm, I remember that.
That outsourced it to Laura. And then, you know, Laura did a hard one.
Yeah.
And we had to go down to Laura in order to get out of it. We had to rescind it and adopt the building ordinance again. And that's how we got safe. And so that one, and then there was one about the water rates that got rescinded back in 2014.
That, that's right. That one I know. You know what I'm saying? But it's a bunch of here.
But let me, let me just explain those two for a second.
Okay.
When an emergency manager comes to your city, everything they do has to be in order. So a lot of those are like suns out, you know, they like savings. Some of those, just like the big stack of ordinances that you have in your ordinance book are just, you know, not really effective, outdated and just, you know, superseded by a state law, federal law or another ordinance or whatever. So just because you have all of that big stack in there doesn't mean that any of those things are active.
Okay.
Some of them are still active. The one regarding the Police Department, that the city used to have called it Safe. It went to a, 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 I'm gonna call it Auxiliary Police Department. That's in there. That's still in effect since we've never gone back to calling it Safe for various reasons, pension reasons and all of that. But what I'll do is I will sit down with you because I know more about that than they.
Okay, okay. All right, fair enough. I appreciate that. Two, two, I just wanna say real quickly, I did not appreciate the statement by the mayor that council was shooting down development proposals that come to this city. That's not the case. The truth of the matter is, is that you, you have brought us development proposals that are full of so many holes, it looks like Swiss cheese. There's a process here that must be followed. And the funny part about it is, is a process that she was a part in writing. And now that she's subject to that process, she doesn't wanna follow it no more. That's the problem, okay? If it was good enough for the previous mayors in which you imposed it upon, then it's good enough for you. Okay, 208.10, 208.11 was written by her and the previous council of this board. And they impose those rules and those restrictions on development in this city on the previous mayor. Now that she's subject to the same rules that she wrote, she wants to get rid of the ordinance. She wants us to rewrite it and say it's obsolete. It doesn't work anymore. Uh, yeah, just a couple of years ago, it worked just fine. There's a process here that must be followed. There are rules to be followed. And what is killing me amongst all of this development is that they managed to get to planning before they went through zoning. How does that work?
They go to plan first and then they go to zoning.
I asked for it in this section, sir.
You're right. I apologize.
I didn't ask for it.
I apologize. Let me make sure I make a note here.
The charter states clear that zoning is first, planning is second. And that's the way it is here in this city, okay? And, and, and if you can't go through, i- i- if you manage to get to zoning, I mean, if, if you manage to get to planning and then go through zoning, that makes no sense to me. I mean, how do you know that your project is zoned to fit in the area in what you're talking about if you haven't went through zoning in the first place? Just common sense. I mean, Walmart can't come to my neighborhood and bulldoze our houses to tell us that they're gonna pull up a shopping center. No, our neighborhood's not zoned for that. They would have to go through zoning first, then planning. That's the way the system rolls. If you go into Detroit, that's exactly how it rolls. You don't get to planning until you go through zoning. Since people love to quote other cities and how they function and operate. Let's quote how they function and operate. If you go into Detroit and you got a plan to build something, where's the first place they send you? Zoning.
Who's the chairman of the zoning board?
Zoning is the first place they send you, okay? The, the, the bottom line is that is the process. I'm not seeing any drawings. I'm not seeing any renderings. In fact, I have had people staying up here and tell us, well, we saw how the previous council did other members. So we don't wanna spend that kind of money until we get site control. Well, I'm sorry, that's not how the process goes.
The zoning board is the planning commission.
Okay, you don't get to tell us what you will and will not do according to the rules.
Mr. Ashapi, the planning commission is the zoning board.
Don't, Madam Mayor.
The rules must be followed. I don't care who's talking and what they talking from or where they talking from. If the previous council members were sitting here, I guarantee you, you wouldn't attempt to run over them. So what makes you think you're gonna attempt to run over me? If Rodney Patrick was sitting here right now, you wouldn't run over him. And you're not gonna run over me. There's a process here. It must be followed. I don't make the rules, but I damn sure will enforce them. We will abide by what is going on in the city. And you talking about people showing respect to this city? We have to make sure that if they follow the rules, they're showing respect to this city. So all I ask is that don't lie on this council and say that we're upholding progress. No. You want us to rubber stamp something. And then later on, when it fails or goes bad, who's gonna take the blame for it? It's definitely not gonna be the administration. It's gonna be the authorizing agency of the city. That's us. We pay that price, not them. And they're quick to point their finger back, well, council approved it. Council did that. That wasn't me. No sum up, the county's up. It's council that approved it. So don't sit here and try to shove something down my throat and tell us what the process is, and I'm sitting here reading it. Ladies and gentlemen, this is zoning and planning. Two hundred and forty-one pages. I suggest you get on MuniCode and print it out. You wanna develop in this city? This is your process. This is it right here. Nobody's upholding anybody from growing in this city or developing in this city. But you will follow the rules. You don't get to cut a profit because it's inconvenient for you or you, or it's too expensive for you. That's not how this goes. If we look at Mr. Dan Gilbert alone, when he was building that building in Detroit, it took him eleven years to get site control from the city of Detroit. And this is a man that has billions of dollars. It took him eleven years just to get site control. It took him five years just in planning and zoning alone. Looking at something smaller, look at the memes group. They built that building on Hamilton. Under Rodney and him, it took five years to get it done. And they had billions of dollars. But there was a process, and you don't steamroll Rodney and him, and you're not finna steamroll me. As long as I'm sitting here, the rules will be followed, the law will be upheld. We, we, we're not changing nothing for your convenience. Because if the shoe was on the other foot and it was my development, I guarantee you, you wouldn't change a damn thing for me. So all I ask of anybody developing in the city of Highland Park is to respect the process and do what is required of you to do, no more, no less. And unlike previous members, and I'm not calling anybody out, at this table here, with these particular members, I don't know about the top seat, but the four sitting on the bottom, you can get a fair shake out of us, and you don't have to buy our time or our attention. Thank you, H P.
Ms. Barton?
Hello, H P, citizens of Highland Park, residents as well. Um, I'm just gonna keep it short and brief. I do have a couple of questions. I do wanna thank you guys for coming out, and those of you who have also on Zoom. With that being said, I wanna say, Ms. Square, I appreciate the fight that you've had with Gleywood and the water. Thank you so very much. Appreciate that. The ones that went out and fought and went and spoke as citizens, appreciate that too. Um, I do have a couple of questions, though, about the meters. Um, I wanted to know if the meters, so do we already have meters and are we getting new ones? Are we putting ones in place? What would be the impact on the next nine years as far as the water's concerned? And I'm only asking because I don't want to repeat the, the same last nine years that we had in Ms. Ford as far as the trucks were concerned. Um, Lisa, thank you for your research. Appreciate that so much. Um, but we don't ever get to see the budget. We never lay eyes on the budget. It's only, you know, hey, is the budget good? It is? Okay, great. That's about as far as it goes. I've only seen what we spend. I never get to see what's coming in. I don't see what we have or even what we have access to. So that was to answer your question. Um, but yeah, go ahead.
There are no meters. We don't have any.
Okay.
The only meters we have are meters at your house, retail meters. We don't have any meters, no meters in the ground. It's, there are no, most communities, every community except for Detroit and Dearborn. Hamtramck doesn't have a sewer meter. They just have a water. So there's sewers. But the city of Detroit is unmetered, and Dearborn's unmetered. And you see why, because back in the day, they built out from those places. And so there are no meters. So you have to get a meter. We need a master meter. The preferred location is DePender. It's a forty-eight inch line under DePender that goes right up to where our plant is. That was put in by Detroit after our plant, because Detroit built from here everything north of here. And, um, what we're hoping is that we get a new water tower to pressurize that point here.
Okay, okay.
And to shoot water down, because if DePender was up here, Highland Park is here.
Okay.
So that water will shoot down into the city that alleviates pressure issues. But nothing is metered.
And will that prevent anybody from stealing water at this point? From when we get the meters in there from this point on?
Well, people steal water because they put illegal tacks, a couple of legal tacks and lines. And things that are building, they tap into the lines. So, you know, we pretty have, pretty much have an aggressive water department now. Um, and, uh, so we're, we're a lot. When I came, the water department had completely collapsed. In those E M orders, it was the collapse of the water tower.
I saw it. Yeah, I saw it.
Starts with the elimination. What they did when the city first went broke, they just started cutting, 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 cutting down. And so to the point where by the time Point Fourteen came, it didn't have a water park.
Mm-hmm.
Bills got all out of whack. They didn't really had, had old meters, didn't work. And so what's happened in the last nine years is you rebuilt a lot.
Okay.
You put your systems back in place. And, um, so you should, once you get a meter in, because you have all the retail meters now, they're being read, you know, we have the electronic reading devices in. State has given the city a lot of money over the last nine years to make improvements to the system. So, and, and, and the whole point of putting in lines is to tighten up the system so you don't have leaks. So, you know, what you're really doing in Highland Park is you're rebuilding the city. It's being reconstructed. It's being redeveloped, not being developed, it's being redeveloped. You're really putting it back together. And so it's gonna, i- i- it's gonna work out good, because right now, you don't have any. No means, anyway. And, uh, so it's gonna, it's gonna gradually improve, just like it's gradually improved. I think it's right out the door. I can see, I can see, I can see the city in lights. Really, you'll be here to, you're young, you'll be here to see it all.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any more questions, Ms. Barton?
No, no, that's it.
Thank you very much. Matt Protop?
Hello, everybody. Highland Park. I know, I love y'all. I wanna thank my pastor as usual.
Say your pastor here.
Wave your hand, pastor. I don't have anything to say. I love y'all.
All right, you done, ma'am? Thank you very much. Um. First, let me talk about Ms. Square. So I teach mediation at Wayne State. This is my first semester teaching it. And I had a class on this lady. I didn't use your name. Now, take that walk. I didn't use her name, but I have graduate students that are finishing this year, and I had an opportunity to talk about working with a professional in mediation, somebody who was exceptionally knowledgeable the whole time we were in mediation, which we don't talk about. I never saw a single piece of paper. And it was like sitting next to a supercomputer to be able to pull these facts up. And I'm actually on my computer trying to find things. Um, it was amazing to see the capacity. Um, one of the things I tell my students is that your credibility is based on what you know when you show up in the room. You don't have a second to call. And, um, excuse my language, Ms. Square scared the shit out of those people. She literally did. She really did. Um, there are actually several versions of her. I, I still want her to be my friend, so I'm not gonna tip the tea. But there is a, there's a lady with a K that, that comes out that I was very impressed with. And so I do wanna thank you. Um, it was a clinic for me. I don't know how I could call myself a professor. I asked her to be interviewed for my class. She said no before I could even get the whole sentence out. Um, but it was, it was truly a clinic to see. It, I, I don't know, was, I don't see myself as Kobe, but I could imagine what it was like when he was standing next to Michael Jordan, like, whoa. So thank you very much, uh, for that. Um, the last thing was the statements that she made was accurate all the time, which is very rare that you have people make accurate statements all the time. So that shows that an enormous amount of capacity and restraint. So I do admire you for that. Um, there are a couple of things I just wanted to talk about with Wayne Metro, these wraparound services that they offer. Uh, last year, I did mediation for the Thirty-fourth District Court in Romulus. This is landlord tenant. There were thousands of people who were on the verge of being evicted from their home. And if it wasn't for those S E R, uh, grant funding that was available for those people, many of them would have lost their homes. Some of them were five, six, seven, eight, ten months um, behind on their rent due to things related to the pandemic. Uh, I can't overstate, for those of us who, I worked in supply chain, I worked at Ecolab during the pandemic. And let me tell you, our supply chain was global. A lot happened. A lot of people lost their jobs. And Wayne Metro, as an entity, was there in a lot of places that I wasn't aware of until I actually started working in the court system. So I would encourage you to let your neighbors know, to take advantage of those wraparound services. They are phenomenal for our community for what they offer. Um, as it relates to the estimates for our vehicle, I wanted to touch on this. A couple of years ago, I needed to get my roof done, and a guy gave me an estimate. And I said, that's ridiculous. And so he invited me up on the roof. I thought I was a smart guy. I still have the scars on the inside of my leg when I got up on the roof. And this man walked me, I have a forty-square roof, he walked me back and forth to show me my roof wearing boots. And when I got down on the floor, I called my father and I said, I learned something today. You pay the expert. So you pay the people who know. And since the, since the pandemic, inflation has hit everything. Have you gone to the grocery store? Anybody? Anybody bought anything? So we are a municipal corporation. So there, there are a lot of processes in place, and I don't wanna pretend that we don't have those processes. Uh, and it's important that we point out that we had grass waist-high this year because people decided not to cut it. There were a lot of things this city needed. We're eleven months in. It didn't happen because people decided, well, we didn't think we needed. We had people that didn't pay water bills trying to make decisions about water. So that, that's a big deal. Getting things done here is a challenge. I'm talking to you as a citizen and as somebody whose children have saved. My twenty-one-year-old daughter says when she graduates, she wants out of this town because people on CCS campus watch or have heard about our city council meetings. My children wanna leave here. They're embarrassed by this community because of what they see happen. Whether you know it or not, outlier media is not the only media agency here. The Wayne County Prosecutor was here. She watches. So we are, we are famous whether we wanna be or not. So we need to start showing that we can get things done. As it relates to the planning and zoning, I was on a planning commission for seven years. I've been the chairman of the zoning board since 2017. I never was so flabbergasted to sit in a room and have somebody tell me what the process is and I'm the actual chairman of the zoning board. The planning commission is the zoning body. It has always been so. People brag about reading, but no one can make the words go together. I'll say that again. The chairman of the zoning board is sitting in this chair, wearing my jacket. So the problem that you're gonna have, ladies and gentlemen, in Highland Park is you're gonna put a Jack in the Box in this room every week, and you're gonna turn it, and the music is gonna play, and near the end, a clown pops out, and you're okay with that. At first, I just wanted to let it go, but I'm not now, because every week somebody says to me, the process must be followed and the rules must be followed. The four of us sitting here are anomalies. I registered to be, I registered to be city council president two hours before the window closed on the last day so that I could be a candidate, so that I could be in a room and discuss something. And the election had to be rigged for me, a sales rep, a college professor, to be sitting here in this council president's chair. It was impossible that I would be Rodney Patrick or Carlton Clyburn or Ken Bates, very well-known, very active people in the community. The election was rigged. It's like you put a thousand white marbles in, blindfold your eyes, drop in four blue marbles and pull out four blue marbles. There are members on this city council who falsified their affidavit. And at first, I was okay with it going. But now, after this, dealing with this for eleven months, I'm gonna put the same energy I put into getting a chemistry degree, the same energy I put into being a professional, the same energy I put into getting a master's degree. I'm gonna put that energy into making sure that these people are exposed and punished. Because on the bottom of your affidavit, it says, I attest that these facts are true under the threat of perjury punishable by, it's a felony, it's punishable by five years imprisonment and a $1,000 fine. The fact that I have been enduring, as a private citizen, the circus that goes on in this room, this is your government at work, and that you've been enduring it for eleven months. I don't know when you're gonna lose your taste for this type of foolishness. It's an embarrassment. And for twenty years, I've been begging my friends, my classmates, to come to Highland Park, and they're already here. I've been a developer for years, and I'm trying to get to Detroit Associate, the Detroit Real Estate Developers Association to come to this city, and they're laughing in my face. Every two weeks, we're down at the U of M Center with the top developers in southeastern Michigan, and I'm begging them to come to Highland Park. And they say to me, you must have lost your mind. You guys have a clown show up there. Because a developer knows when you book a contractor and you give them that first draw, you got twenty-four months to get that development going, or you lose your funding. Serious developers with tens of millions of dollars on the table are bypassing this entire city. And if you've driven Woodward, you've seen those cranes swinging. You see those buildings being built? I go to SEMCAG meetings. I'm in other communities. People in other governments are pointing at us. And if you're okay with this, what's happening here? If you're okay with these people embarrassing you, if you're fine with that, I'm fine with it too. I'm absolutely fine with it. But it's my conviction, it's my role as city council president, it says right in the charter that our role is to look after the health, welfare and safety of the citizens. How is the welfare being looked after if you allow their government to be drawn into a ditch every two weeks? The water crisis is over, and we don't have a single development up in this city in the first year. And they were singing every, they were singing, uh, come here to my Lord after the election took place. And what has happened? I'm telling you what's happening. I allege that somebody sabotaged the government in this community. I allege that the voters were disenfranchised. I allege that somebody paid a person to knock the candidates off the ballot. And they got help to make sure that they never got back on. This is the only time this happened in the United States of America. It was two news stories about the city of Highland Park, about the fraud that took place here. So it would be fine for me to sit here and administer this board. It's not the first time I've been a president of an organization. But I'm gonna spend every spare minute I have making sure that the fraud that was committed is disposed. News cameras came here, and I had to sit and watch my mother be so angry that tears burst from her eyes over some BS about what happened in this room. The last thing you wanna do, the last thing you wanna do is come in here everywhere talking about, I wanna make sure that the process is followed and the rules are followed. I'm gonna spend every minute I have making sure that that felony is proven and that the people responsible for the felonies are held accountable. If I have to spend my own time and my own money, I'm sick of this, and you should be sick of it too. Having concluded all business related to the city of Highland Park, the chair is open to entertain a motion to adjourn. We can sit here all night. I got papers to grade.
I don't have any papers to grade.
The meeting is still in order, and the meeting will still be in order until, so we have a motion to adjourn. The clerk has left the meeting. The clerk has left the meeting. Now, we really gonna be on the news tonight. Y'all ain't read the book. The chair would declare the meeting adjourned.